All right, good morning, or good morning. Let's not start this over again. So, let's start at the end. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, November 18th Town Council Meeting. Item number two is our call to order.
Mayor Eaton?
Here.
Vice Mayor Adam?
Here.
Councilmember Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Bucelato?
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Here.
Councilmember Benzina?
Here.
Councilmember Bedford?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Item number three is our moment of silence and followed by our pledge allegiance. Tonight in our moment of silence, let's just keep all of our young cowboys and cowgirls in your prayers and in your thoughts for a safe parada coming up next week. This is a very thrilling time for them, and we just need everyone to go home safe. Thank you. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, indivisible, with the love of justice and tolerance. All right, thank you, everyone. Nice crowd in the house tonight. Appreciate you all being here. Item number five is our call to the public. Call the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So I have some speakers tonight lined up. First one, I have Chris Reed. Good evening, Ms. Reed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Guess I'm not quite that tall. Um, I'm a member of AAA. Imagine a lot of the folks here are too. In fact, there are 1 million members of AAA in Arizona. Arizona also, um, everybody gets the Via magazine then. And that covers also all the membership in Nevada, Utah, Oregon, Idaho, Wyoming, Alaska, and Northern California. And when I got my issue, I was very excited when I opened it up, and there was a full-page ad for Casa Grande. Full-page color ad for the copper corridor from Globe to Oracle. A full-page ad for Superior. Guess what wasn't in here? I don't understand why. It just seems like we're falling behind the other towns who are getting their promotions out. I don't know who's really responsible. Maybe it's a chamber thing, maybe it's a town thing, communications, whatever. If we need to join together to pay for an ad like that, I think it might be something to pursue. But it just was really disappointing because I was so excited. Parada would have been advertised in there. It would have, imagine, a million people get this just in Arizona and all of the Northwest, basically. So, thank you for your time. Hope you consider that.
Thank you, Chris, and we absolutely will consider that, and that is unfortunate. So we'll follow up on that, manage your walls a little bit, and kinda who we would work with on that. So thank you, Ms. Reed, for that. I have another one signed up, Ms. Bonnie Barriola.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers.
Good evening, Bonnie.
I am Bonnie Barriola. I read in the news, you're very much needed and appreciated project manager, has suggested a new police building, which is an excellent idea with all the growth in Florence, both north and south of the Gila. In addition, the town also needs a new public works building and a larger town hall. Should council agree to build these buildings, I highly recommend not building them in the floodplain area of the Gila. The current town hall, as well as the community services building and aquatic center were built in the floodplain. The buildings themselves were supposedly built high enough to bring them out of the floodplain, but all of the parking lots would be covered with water. The seven acres where town hall and fire station are built, and the 27 acres where the community center and aquatic center are located, were purchased to help alleviate flooding from Main Street. That's the reason the neighborhood park was built, since it was a flood-prone area. Subsequently, cotton farmer Jim Giles talked the town into purchasing his 40 acres north of the park. I'll never understand why the town had plans prepared for Territory Square. I personally saw 200-year floods in the 1990s. The last one was in 1993, and water was up to ruggles. I checked with county, and they said that, it said that, gave me that information, and that was 32 years ago. The recent flood in Texas, where the children drowned, hadn't flooded since 1987, and that's 38 years ago. If you build additional buildings, please build them on high ground and not in the floodplain just because the town owns the property. Also, oh, I also fully agree with your public works director that you need your own connectivity over the Gila and not depend on Coolidge and ADOT to provide the community connectivity between Anthem and downtown. Oh, I say, add a little comment. Have or let developers pay for that parkway of connectivity. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Appreciate you. All right, I have no one else signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Good evening, sir. Please state your name.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I think you know, you all know me, but for the record, I'm Les Buckner, a resident of Florence and a constituent. Um, I'm here to speak to Agenda Item 14C, which is the discussion approval/disapproval related to the electronic message center sign at Fire Station 2. I would request that council tonight vote to disapprove, moving forward that with it. And I would also ask that council request staff to put this on, get this on the next working session agenda, if you wanna, if you really wanna speak more about it, because it was very clear at the October 21st meeting that council members were not aligned. There were, there was a lot of discussion. It was very confusing. And as a matter of fact, I listened to a number of you suggest that, as an example, the locating the sign at Franklin Hunt Highway made a lot more sense than any other location. Yet at the end, somehow you wound up voting to put it at Fire Station 2, which is not a good location. So I would urge you, please, you know, do not go forward with this. If you, if you feel an absolute need to take action, then, then vote to put a sign at 79 and Main Street. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Les. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in-house? Anyone online? Not seeing any. I'm gonna close the first call to the public. For you that know, we do have a second call to the public. If you sit here and, and think that you come up with something you would like to speak to, we have a second call to the public toward the end of the meeting. Item number six is our public hearing and presentations. Six A is our presentation by Hannah Quincy and staff MAG Regional Council Superstation Vista's Multimodal Transportation Planning Study. Good evening, Hannah. Good to see you.
Thank you. While he's getting that pulled up, I just wanna say, good evening, Mayor Eaton and Councilmembers, and thank you so much for having me tonight. I had a beautiful drive into the town following the sunset tonight, so pleased to be here. Thank you for this opportunity to provide an update on the Superstation Vista's Multimodal Transportation Planning Study. In this presentation, I'm gonna highlight the study's progress illustrating the area's growth and how we can mitigate existing transportation constraints with a vision for the future transportation network in this fast-growing subregion. Perfect, thank you. As the designated metropolitan planning organization for the region, MAG provides a forum for local governments to work together on issues that impact everyone in the greater Phoenix region. This includes leaning planning efforts and implementing policy decisions that impact the future of the region, with transportation at the core of MAG's work. The MAG region is made up of 27 cities and towns, three native nations. It spans two counties and covers 10,600 square miles, and this area is home to 5.2 million people today, and the population is expected to increase to 6.8 million by 2050. The Superstation Vista's study area spans roughly 287 square miles within the cities of Apache Junction, the town of Florence, the city of Mesa, the town of Queen Creek, and Pinal and Maricopa Counties, with land managed by the Arizona State Land Department and sitting adjacent to the Gila River Indian Community. I also wanted to highlight that the study area does include the newly incorporated town of Santan Valley. And in terms of your context for, for the town of Florence, the southern boundary is Arizona Farms Road in Florence. MAG conducted this study at the request and for the benefit of our member agencies to help you plan for the future transportation needs in this very fast-growing subregion. The study provides a data-driven framework for understanding what the future near-term and long-range transportation network could look like to accommodate projected traffic volumes from population and employment growth. Throughout the study, we've taken direction from the study area's agencies through a technical advisory group and sought input from the stakeholders and members of the To illustrate growth in the Superstation Vista's study area, I'll walk you through a series of current and forecasted socioeconomic condition snapshots, with the darker colors representing higher densities of population and employment, which today are concentrated in the western portions of the study area. Shown on your screen here is existing population. MAG forecasts that population will grow 70% in the study area over the next 25 years. By 2030, you see the orange color darken, representing a densification of population, and by 2050, that population continues to densify and spread eastward. Now shown on your screen is existing employment density. By 2030, the purple color darkens and spreads throughout the study area, signalizing growing and densifying employment, especially along key transportation corridors and planned investments. And by 2050, MAG projects that employment will grow 152%. Traffic volumes will grow as well between now and 2050. The darker and redder lines shown here are the corridors with the highest traffic volumes today. By 2030, these traffic volumes will continue to grow, and by 2050, key corridors are experiencing major mobility constraints, including traffic congestion, limited capacity of the existing roadways, and gaps in the roadway grid. Our study team developed recommended multimodal transportation networks for 2030 and 2050 horizons with input from our member agencies. The individual projects included in these recommended networks are sourced from a combination of MAG's regional investment plan, local capital improvement programs, and adopted plans, as well as new recommended projects identified through the study's network stress testing scenarios. The purpose of these recommended networks is not to prescribe specific projects, but to serve as a planning tool for you. A framework that your town can use to identify priorities, guide development decisions, and coordinate future transportation investments. The 2030 and 2050 roadway networks are the study's cornerstone recommendations and include 136 new or widened roadway projects and 34 operational intersection improvements. The maps' orange lines represent roadway widening, and the green lines are new roadway construction. Intersection enhancements are shown as dots on the map. These were also identified to improve traffic flow and mitigate localized congestion. The 2030 netway, the 2030 network shown here addresses current development pressures by expanding existing arterial roadway capacities and closing key connectivity gaps in the grid network, particularly where growth is most concentrated. Many of these projects address congestion hotspots along corridors like Hunt Highway, Ironwood Drive, Ellsworth Road, and Jermaine Road, which are already operating near capacity. To support future development, especially east of the Central Arizona Project now, the 2050 network adds several new east-west and north-south roadway corridors to complete the grid network and create new access points to the US-60. The network closes key roadway gaps, for example, completing missing segments along Meridian Road. The recommended networks also include a total of 12 distinct freeway projects, as shown on your screen here, to enhance regional mobility and support freight travel, including critical improvements to the State Route 24 and the future north-south corridor. By 2030, for example, the State Route 24 is planned to be converted into a full freeway with grade-separated interchanges to alleviate pressure on surrounding arterials. The recommendations also include 199 non-motorized projects. The dotted lines on these maps show new multi-use paths, bike lanes, safer crossings, and trail connections for 2030 on-street, 2050 off-street, and, and 2050 on-street facilities. The recommendations also include potential long-range fixed route transit extensions, including extensions of the Route 108 in Mesa and the routes 156 and the 184 to Queen Creek. The recommendations also include preferred freight corridors, as shown as dashed lines on this map, that support continued industrial growth, including the Pecos Industrial Rail Access and Train Extension, known as the Pirate Spur, and connections to the Union Pacific Main Line. Strategic planning for freight is essential as developments expand, like the energy, like the LG Energy Facility and the Elliott Road Tech Corridor. Over the summer, the study team reached consensus on these recommended networks with the technical advisory group and held public and stakeholder review of these preliminary recommendations. The team is currently finalizing the recommended networks and developing the final report, which will include an implementation and funding strategy. We anticipate bringing this final report to MAG policy committees for acceptance in January 2026. And once complete, the study will serve as a technical and strategic resource for our members, member agencies, a tool that you can reference to guide local planning, development review, and future transportation investments. In closing, again, I want to emphasize that Superstation Vista's is one of Arizona's fastest-growing subregions. The study provides a forward-looking, data-informed framework that keeps residents moving and to help member agencies respond to growth with coordinated multimodal transportation solutions. We appreciate Florence's guidance as we, and support as we move forward towards a final plan that reflects both regional priorities and local needs. Mayor Eaton and Councilmembers, thank you so much for your time tonight. That includes, concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
All right. Hannah, thank you so much for that. And just for the rest of council, there was a couple things. So during the MAG committees, which is Maricopa Association of Governments, so we have a number, so I sit on the regional council as the mayor. Bruce sits on the management committee for MAG. And Andy, you sit on the transportation policy committee. So those are the three committees that will be final reports and executive summary in January. One thing that we do, so, uh, one of the questions that I had when this was first presented to us last month, I guess, at the regional, or two months ago at the regional, is my first question was, why was not all of Florence put into this study? And the answer that I got was that, at the time, it wasn't expressed by the town to be put into that far into the study. So I just wanted to make sure that council knew that that's why, that we're not, it was previous leadership. So anyway, so that's why it's not, we appreciate it, and we look forward to adding on to this study and, and looking at this study. So at this time, I'll open it up to council for any questions. Vice Mayor?
So, Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify, because I heard you say Hunt Highway, but it's not the Florence part of Hunt Highway. Is that what I'm understanding?
Right. It goes to Arizona Farms. Correct.
Correct. And Mayor Eaton and councilmembers, the southern boundary of the study area is Arizona Farms Road, so any of the recommendations that we have would be north of Arizona Farms Road.
Okay. Councilmember Bucelato?
I would just like to speak for myself and say that I am very interested in us being in the next study. It is very much needed in our area, and we have a lot of, um, unique issues that we need to really work through, and I'm only speaking for myself as one, but I'm hoping that we can be in the next one, because it's very much needed. Thank you.
And we are, there's, we are part of it, but, but our, our northern part, but the whole thing is. So, anyone else have anything else for Hannah? Okay. Well, thank you so much for coming down. Uh, we appreciate you, and we look forward to, I look forward to seeing you here in January.
Thank you, Mayor Eaton and councilmembers. Thanks so much for having me tonight and look forward to continue to work with you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a safe trip back home. All right. Item 6B is our presentation on Florence Junior Parada rodeo events occurring the week of November 24th, 2025. We have the Fosters in the house tonight, so everybody was probably wondering why that we were wearing cowboy hats and we're kinda dressed up tonight. It's because this is who we are, and we are the parada, and these guys did not wear any cowboy hats of all nights. I just, I strive to be Bill Foster, and he didn't wear his black hat tonight, so.
Well, I appreciate you dressing up tonight, Mayor, for the occasion, so. Uh, no, it's really good, good to see everybody get in the spirit, get in the spirit, if you will. So, and part of that spirit, as you know, is each year we put together a program for our parada, and I have a program here for, for each one of the council members, so. I'll leave you right here with it. Lisa, and I just wanna say, you know, thank you to this council for supporting us throughout the year and, and all, all the years that we've been a part of this. Uh, we are celebrating our 93rd annual, getting closer to that 100th, and so a lot of planning's coming into play right now, but it's been a real busy year for us, and, and it'll be a very busy fall. But we're excited. We're excited to see, uh, the transformation of the youth that we've had out there over the last two years, working their way as hard as they can to be a part of this junior parada this year. So, um, I just wanna say thank you for that.
All right. Bill and Kathy, we appreciate you guys. So, just, so, just so, you know, so we, we usually do a proclamation, and we are doing a proclamation this week, Thursday night, if it's not raining, at the rodeo grounds. So, we started this year, started taking proclamations on the road to where, to the people where it mattered when they're there, instead of making them come in. So, I will tell you that we do have a backup plan, 6 o'clock tomorrow night at the rodeo grounds, if, or Thursday night, Thursday night, rodeo grounds. If not, we will be back here. So, this is probably the first time that our town manager is hearing this. We just made the plan, so. So, anyway, so you're welcome, sir. You now know. So, you guys, we probably should get a picture while you guys are here.
Awesome.
Okay. So I constantly catch heck from the council, some council members, about going up and down steps. I won't tell you Tony's name. But, uh, anyway, Patrick Miller. Come on up. So, we're here, we're here tonight to celebrate Patrick. Sir, good to see you. So, so tonight, um, we're here to celebrate 20 years with the town, and, and we so appreciate Patrick and all of our employees, and 20 years is a long time, and we sure appreciate that, and, and hopefully you're not done, because we need, we need you. So, but, huh? So, I, I just want a little bit, just say a little bit about, about you. Yeah, yeah. So apparently you're not, he's not gonna let you go. So, so Patrick began his career in the town of Florence as a maintenance worker one in 2005, and promoted to maintenance worker three in 2007. Today, Patrick proudly stands as the longest-tenured maintenance worker three in the Streets Division. Throughout his career, he has exemplified dedicated integrity and trust, earning the respect and admiration of his coworkers, known throughout the department as the safety guru. Thank you for that. Patrick holds numerous certifications, including traffic signal technician two, foreclick operator, and flagger trainer. He is also certified to, uh, certified to create traffic control plans for all departmental roadway projects. With his extensive knowledge and experience, Patrick consistently demonstrates sound judgment and a steadfast commitment to safety. His initiative in ensuring proper programming, data collection, and maintenance adjustments is unwavering and valuable and invaluable to the team. Patrick's success in the Streets Division stems from his impeccable integrity, strong leadership, and steady encouragement during challenging times. He continually monitors and promotes safety standards across all areas of public works, setting a high bar for training and excellence within the department. Beyond his professional expertise, Patrick is affectionately known as the Gordon Ramsay of public works. Whether it's at the grill, stove, or stirring a pot of his famous albagonis, albagonis, albogonis, yeah, sorry, I really messed that up. It's, you think names are bad, food is even worse. Patrick's culinary skills have become legendary, legendary. His delicious contributions to department gatherings are as appreciated as hard work and dedication. And I have had some of your food when I worked here, when we had the Christmas stuff and everything else. So, Patrick, congratulations. We appreciate you very much. So, let's get a, get a quick picture. and one two-year seat for the 2026 election cycle. Ms. Lisa?
Mayor and members of council, it is that time again.
Mayor and members of council, it is that time again and the clerk's office does have council packets available. There are three seats that are up for four years and those seats are Vice Mayor Kathy Adams, council member Jose Maldonado, council member Nicole Butchalado, and we do have one two-year term up and that would be council member Snake Neal. And so packets are available at town hall. You can come in and pick them up at any time. We'll start a campaign both on social media, we will start it also through the newspapers, lots of words out about the packets. Anyone who's interested will have to collect between 169 and 338 signatures to be able to be placed on the pack ballot. And clerk's office will accept those finalized packets between the months of March 7th and April 6th. So this is just the announcement that the packets are available and anybody wanting to get a jumpstart on getting their packets, please come down and visit the town clerk's office.
All right. Thank you very much and I should reiterate as well for any of our public out there, public service, while many times it's not fun and there's a lot of stuff that goes through, but we thrive as a town on public service and we appreciate anybody that's interested in this as well. Yes, vice mayor's question.
I had a question about when a resident or citizen pulls a packet, do they have to specify whether it's the four-year or two-year term?
Yes, they are individualized races. So what will happen is, let's say six people run for the three, three-year or three, four-year terms, that's one race, and then two people might run for the two-year seat. And so people would be able to vote for three people for the seats that were four years and they would be able to vote for one person. And the same with the public, same when we're out circulating petitions, the public will have the right to sign off on three petitions of the members who are circulating and for a four-year seat, but they will only have the right to sign off on one signature for the two-year seat.
I'm sorry, didn't ask if anybody else had any questions for Lisa. What if you have a lot of people sign up for the two-year and nobody for the four-year?
Well, then we'll be appointing.
All right, yeah, let's not do that again, so. All right. Thank you again, Lisa, for that. Item six E, this is a public hearing on ordinance number 775-25 and discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona approving a zone change for an approximately two acre property, assessor parcel number 202-10-0030 located south of Adamsville Road and east of the Centennial Park Avenue alignment from single-family ranchette R1R to a single-family residential R118. Ms. Benitez, good evening.
Good evening. Mayor, vice mayor, member of the council, this item is pretty straightforward, looking for a rezone on this property from single-family ranchette to single-family residential R118. That means the, the lot sizes can be as small as 18,000 square feet. The owner is looking to get this rezone in order to build a house and then possibly split the land in the future to as many as maybe four parcels, maybe less, to build homes for his children and or relatives. So that is his current plan at this time. That could change as it moves forward, but at this time, he just wants to have land and rezone it to build single-family homes on. This item did go to Planning and Zoning Commission on November 6th. It was afforded a recommendation of approval by a 3-1 vote. The questions that came up during that time talked about access and utilities coming to the land, but at this stage in the, the land's development, we're in a rezone, so we're making sure the use of the land is appropriate for what's surrounding. And what is surrounding this parcel is more single-family homes. You have your, a combination of the single-family ranchette as well as that R118 single-family. So it's not at a place and it meets the general, the general plan in having those single-family homes as well. The applicant did have documentation and he did do research on the land and how to get access to it and through the irrigation canal that is nearby. And there's some documentation that's included in your packet that helps with that case. The utilities and actual access to that lot will come in the future when this land is, or this parcel is being developed and/or plotted. There, oh yeah, I already talked about that there was concerns at that public hearing at the P and Z commission that did discuss the access and utilities, because I stated at this time, we're just looking at the zoning. The applicant is in attendance today if you have questions for them. At this time though, I have no further comment and I am open for questions.
All right. Marcella, thank you for that. And I will also note that we do have a one letter that was submitted
Yes.
to the Planning and Zoning Division, to, to the office, to us, on behalf of the Kimptons in, in opposition of this. So just, just to note that, that we did get that. So at this time, before we open up for questions, I do, I will open up the public hearing for ordinance number 775-25. If there are anyone online or in person that would like to speak, please raise your hand or come to speak. Good evening, sir. Come on up and please state your name.
Sure. First name is Mitch, last name is Clough. I appreciate the opportunity, Mayor Eaton and the council members. So I own this property and I've had it since 2006. I was born and raised in Florence, went through all the hardships throughout all the years of the bad economy and the whole nine yards, but at this point in time, what we decided to do, my wife and I, who owned the property, basically she, this is her third bout with breast cancer. So she recently got diagnosed for the third time, she's stage four, and we were wanting to take the land basically and build a home. And this, this again is based on her health. And at the same time, the rezoning process, we wanted to be able to have two boys that we have that are in college at this point in time, if the health gets towards negative, then to have them live there as well in their own homes. So that was the main reason for the zone split. It's pretty straightforward and once again, I've owned the land, went through the whole process of investigating everything as far as access, and I believe that was about it really. So if you have any questions, that's, I'm here to answer.
All right, sir, when we, so you are the applicant. So when I close the public hearing, if somebody, if council has another question, we may call you back up for that.
Sure.
All right. At this time, should be a second call for anyone that wants to speak tonight for this item, online or in person. Not seeing any, I'm going to now close the public hearing and open it up for council discussions. Is there anyone on council that has a question or a comment? Okay, vice mayor?
On behalf of Planning and Zoning, I'm the liaison there, so I was at the meeting. I thought that our commission, as usual, did a very good job, very thorough job of vetting this. The questions were far ranging and I believe they were satisfied with all the answers and it was unanimous, yes, so.
Thank you, vice mayor. Councilmember Butchalado?
Can we clarify if it was unanimous or if it was 3-1? By any chance? I believe you said 3-1.
I'm assuming that there was four people there.
Yes, so it wasn't unanimous, it was a 3-1 vote to approve it.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. Anyone else? All right, I'll make one comment, I have no questions. I will make a comment that as the vice mayor alluded to, our Planning and Zoning does a fantastic job when they ask questions and, and move it through. I myself watch every one of our commission meetings from home and so I watched that night, I watched all the testimonies that went on from everyone that was involved in this. And I believe as AJ said, this is just the first step. Some of the comments and some of the concerns of the folks that were opposing this would be, be better addressed in the next stage or more addressed in the next stage, is the way I understand it. And AJ shaking his head, yes, that was confirming what I heard. So with that, I would entertain a motion to approve. I make a motion, we approve ordinance 775-25.
Second.
Gave a motion and a second. Any council member have any comments, questions? All right, not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, very good. Thank you so much. Thank you, sir. Item six F is a public hearing on ordinance number 776-25 and discussion approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving a zone change, property located between the Northern Bank of the Gila River and generally south of Hunt Highway and the North Side Canal and approximately a half mile west of the Pinal Parkway from combination of planned unit developments, PUD as Merrill Ranch and rural agriculture RA10 to heavy industrial. So, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, vice mayor, council members. Before you this evening is an application to change zoning over several tracts of property located south of Hunt Highway, north of the Gila River, and approximately a half mile west of Arizona 79. This rezone is the second step in the process. You will recall that a short time ago, this applicant was before you seeking a major general plan amendment and a aggreg, or mining overlay over this property. At that time, you approved that general plan amendment and that mining overlay. This is the next step in their process to change the zoning across those eight parcels from a combination of planned unit development Merrill Ranch and rural agriculture RA10 to heavy industrial HI. You, you have the packet before you and I know that you've heard much of this presentation during the general plan amendment and overlay. The petitioner is here this evening and I believe may have a presentation and would like to speak on behalf of this application.
Thank you, AJ.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Paul Gilbert, 701 North 44th Street in Phoenix, Arizona. Assisting me tonight is land planner in my office, Kurt Valdir. I'm going to take a chance tonight and I hope that my brevity will be rewarded. You have heard this case thoroughly when we presented the general plan amendment. We stand before you today with the posture of a staff recommendation of approval, a unanimous planning commission recommendation of approval, and your prior unanimous approval of the general plan. All we're doing is simply expanding an existing, excuse me, sand and gravel operation. Frankly, there's not much else that the property could be used for. So I'll rest my case, but just in case you want to hear it, I have a seven-page presentation in my pocket.
Does any council need to see this or hear this? So I will say that each time that at public work or planning zoning, you do state that you get paid by the word. So this is kind of, just don't hold this against us that you're not getting paid as much tonight, so.
It pains me.
Okay, very good, sir. So then at this time, hang on. All right, at this time, this is a public hearing, so I, we may have some other questions for you, so I'm going to open up the public hearing for ordinance number 776-25. So if there's anyone in house or online that would like to speak, please raise your hand or come to the podium. Not seeing anybody online, Chris, or seeing that portion of it.
No, sir.
Okay. All right, we have three people online, nobody's raising their hand. Okay, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing on ordinance number 776-25 and I'm going to open it up to council for any questions for the applicant for planning and zoning. Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion. I make a motion, we approve ordinance 776-25.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other comments or questions? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Item six G is a public hearing on a conditional use permit for the Rankin Mining Project to expand mining activities and discussion approval/disapproval of resolution number A resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona approving the conditional use permit for the expansion of sand and gravel mining activities at the Rankin Mining Project located between the Northern Bank of the Gila River and generally south of the Hunt Highway and the North Side Canal and approximately a half mile west of Pinal Parkway. Hi AJ.
Good evening, Mayor, vice mayor, council members. The next step in the process for the rank and mine would be to secure your approval this evening for a conditional use permit to allow a mining operation in the heavy industrial zoning classification that you approved in your previous action. The applicant, the petitioner, is here to speak on behalf of the petition if you have any questions about their conditional use permit.
Sir, I'm going to make even less money. I, I'm just, let me just ask the council if they need to hear any presentation from you.
I don't know, I'm debating.
I think he wants to speak.
If you want, if you'd like to speak, you certainly can. You're not making much money tonight.
Yeah.
I don't need to.
Is there anything else to add, sir?
I, since this will be, I have to sit down after this as you close the public hearing. I would like to make a comment that I have very much enjoyed working with your town attorney. He was very helpful on this case and I just wanted to give him a short shout out. Thank you.
Very good, we appreciate that. Thank you for that. All right, with that, I'm going to open up a public hearing on conditional use permit for the Rankin Mining Project to expand mining activities. If there's anyone online or in-house that would like to speak to this, please raise your hand or come to the podium. Not seeing any, either way, I'm going to now close the public hearing on this conditional use permit. And any questions from the council? Not seeing any, I'm going to entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we approve the conditional use permit for Rankin Mining Project 1971-25.
Second. We have a motion and a couple seconds. Any other questions? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, very good. Sir, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That was easy money for you tonight.
No such thing as easy money.
We won't tell the Rankins that you weren't here all night long.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, item number seven is at this time, we are going to adjourn to the Board of Adjustments. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the Board of Adjustments.
Make a motion, we adjourn to the Board of Adjustments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to the Board, adjourn to the Board of Adjustments. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Seven A in the Board of Adjustments, public hearing in action for variance for relief from manufactured home subdivision age requirement for a manufactured home proposed for 524 East Butte Street, Florence, Arizona. AJ, good evening.
Mayor, vice mayor, council members, before you this evening is an application for a variance seeking relief from chapter 150, 056, manufactured home subdivision with the initials MHS to seeking relief from the town's requirement that the manufactured home be no more than five years in age since date of original construction. I am going to offer a brief presentation and we also have the applicant in the room this evening and I believe that the applicant is also prepared to offer a brief presentation regarding her application. regarding her application. This site is located at the northeast corner of Butte Avenue and Warner Street. This shows the site as well as how the home would be placed on the parcel. As I mentioned earlier, the applicant, an owner of 524 East Butte, is requesting an approval of a variance seeking relief from the age requirement as outlined in the town's municipal code. That section of the code is included on this slide, and I spoke to those words earlier in the presentation. The area is surrounded, as you know, this section of Florence has multiple zoning classifications over it, so to the property to the north, all of the zoning districts listed there are applicable to that area, including R2, Neighborhood Office, Single Family Residential, and Manufactured Home Subdivision. The same zoning is applicable to properties to the east and west. And across Butte Avenue to the south, that property is zoned Neighborhood Office and the use is currently Single Family Residential. We've provided some images of the area to give a sense of context in the area if you didn't have the opportunity to visit the site while you considered this application. Again, northeast corner of Butte and Warner. This is the site as it currently sets. You'll see that there's currently, looks to be a three-foot chain link fence surrounding the site. You'll see that there is a portion of a pad that was there and served the previous structure on the site, and you see the home to the north and the carport that is currently north of this location. To the east, you'll see that there are some smaller storage buildings and a few vehicles parked on site, and again, another image of the mobile, the manufactured home to the This is a little, in the same neighborhood, a little further down the street, some of the uses that you're seeing in that section of Florence. To the west of the property is a vacant property right now. It is being used when there are services held, the buildings that you see in the background in the image to the left during services, and then you'll see that there's some other, again, context and things that are going on in that area. And then this is a single-family residential home, stick-built construction that is northwest of the property in question this evening. That concludes my presentation. As I mentioned in my opening remarks, the applicant is here and is prepared to present their request this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Monroe. All right, good evening, ma'am. So, we're going to do it a little bit different, so we're going to let you, before we open a public hearing, we'll go ahead and let you give us some additional information and let you speak to this, and then we'll open up our public hearing and then maybe have more questions for either staff or the applicant, so.
Do you want to testify? You say, "I swear." I swear. That I will tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So, help me, guys.
All right, just as a reminder to the public that the applicant's being sworn in because she's testifying at the variance hearing for this, so thank you for that. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, good evening, council. My name is Jessica Carter, and I am here with my mom and my sisters, and I will be speaking on behalf of my mother, Barbara Yanez. We are Arizona natives, born and raised in Tempe, Arizona. My mom recently purchased her dream mobile home as well as the 7,700 lot on 524 East Butte Avenue of August this year. We are asking that you grant us an opportunity to become a part of the town of Florence community and allow my mom to live in her forever home. While the date of the manufacturer is older than the town's requirement, the unit has undergone a complete floor-to-ceiling renovation with beautiful, modern upgrades ensuring that it meets the community's standards for safety, durability, and appearance. The home has new, modern installations. Her beautiful home will look, function, and appraise as a new build and will not distract the character or value of the neighborhood, granting this variance facilitates the development of the property that has been vacant for almost 20 years. This partial has remained as unproductive and undeveloped, so granting this variance brings productive use to the land and resolves longstanding issue of undeveloped land, utilizing it for its intended purpose, and improving the overall appearance and maintenance of the block.
All right, thank you very much for that, so.
Thank you.
Please sit down, and we'll ask you back up if we have any other questions. Thank you so much for that. At this time, I'm now going to open the public hearing for this Board of Adjustments variance. If there's anyone online or in person that would like to speak to this, please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Okay, not seeing anyone, I'm going to now close the public hearing and open up comments to council. I'm going to go first. So, on this, and as I went through this packet, I became more confused as to what the variance was asking for. I knew the variance was asking for, it was proposed for age, I didn't see the age or of the home. Can you, sure, can you add that to us, please?
Okay, so, yes, the mobile home is a 1978 Redmond New Moon, but it has had, like I mentioned earlier, floor-to-ceiling renovations in and out. It's a beautiful home, and it will bring life to that corner lot that, like I said, has been vacant for almost 20 years.
Okay, very good, yes, and we've seen the pictures. Pictures were part of it, so it was beautifully remodeled inside for sure, so, all right, thank you for that.
Can we have them put the picture of, on the screen from our packet? Out of the, isn't there a picture in our packet?
I.
I know, I want this, I want it to be seen by everybody.
So, so with this, to finish what I was saying, is that I would like, and Mr. Cooper, I would like to go into executive session on this item. I have more legal questions than probably answers on this, this project, so at this time, I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion that we adjourn to executive session.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. We'll be right back.
Mayor, council members, could we also include the, in the executive session, the town manager, town clerk, and the planning director along with the town attorney?
Yes, please. Okay, at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn from the Board of Adjustment.
I make a motion that we adjourn from executive session?
Or executive session. Second. Thank you. Okay, we, I have a motion and a second to adjourn from executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, we are now back into our Board of Adjustments. We did have, thank you so much, and so sorry for the delay on that, we just had a couple questions, and when we do legal questions, we just have to have those questions. So, at this time, there are a couple of questions that we have. If you can join us back up again, and I'll entertain some questions from council. And just as a reminder, you were sworn in, so you're still sworn in to testify in this variance. So, I have a quick question, I'm going to open it up to council. So, the age of the home is 1978.
Correct.
So, as you know, we have to meet special rules of variances, and that is outside of the date range for that. Now, it is not a secret, by looking at pictures, that this thing has been very much this thing, I apologize. This home has been very remodeled, and it's quite gorgeous inside, actually.
Thank you.
So, my question is, when this was remodeled, were there permits, I know this came from Scottsdale, were there permits drawn from Scottsdale?
Yes.
Or from the state?
Yes.
For the remodel?
Yes, everything was modeled through, I mean, the woman that I purchased it from, she said that she, she went through all of the legal, the right, what you were supposed to go through, the housing of Scottsdale.
Okay, do you have copies of those stuff, or can you obtain copies of those?
I can obtain them, I don't have them with me today.
Okay, all right, that was, that was my question. So, I'm going to open it up to council if any other council members have any questions. Okay, not seeing any. So, at this time, I would ask for a motion for the variance of relief for this manufactured home subdivision requirement.
Are we going to stipulate the stipulation?
You absolutely can, whatever you do as a motion.
Okay, so, when we, I just want to clarify this, Mr. Cooper. When we, when we make the motion right now, we can add in the stipulations at that time?
Mayor, council member Bucalotto, yes, you can, as long as the maker of the motion and the seconder of the motion are willing to accept that as amendments to their original motion.
Okay.
And I apologize for probably talking just a little bit more on this. The decision of whether or not to grant a variance is left with the board, the council acting on behalf of the Board of Adjustments. There is one issue raised by the chair and the mayor in this, in this case, basically the age of the mobile home, as pointed out in the presentation, that our code says five years, you know, new construction within five years there, and my understanding is that there's been discussions that this mobile home might possibly meet that, but we don't have proof to do that, so if the, if the council decides to have a motion to approve it, we are going to have to address that issue as one of the findings that are there, and also set forth, how do we go about proving that it meets that provision of our town code? And one other thing that we probably need to get the applicant to understand and state on the record, that before we get all this resolved, please do not move that mobile home to the town of Florence until we basically have got all the approvals in place and the town has issued that permit.
Okay, then, you know what, I'll make the motion. So, I'll make a motion to approve this variance with a condition. Because of this age requirement is a big deal, and it's a big deal in the building community, and it's a big deal, we, the condition would be that you would provide our community development documentation showing that when this was remodeled, that it was remodeled with permits and to the standards that it would at least meet our current standards for a, for moving a mobile home in.
Okay.
So, that would be it. Does everyone understand that motion? Okay, do I have a second?
So, we want to make sure it meets all codes of today, within the last five years.
It meets, it meets the codes that would be done at the time of our requirement. Correct.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, we might need, you may need to consider basically that it would have to approve, you know, it will have to pass an inspection, in addition to that there, that that would be a condition, and then I would also ask that basically in the, as part of our condition, that the, that you stipulate that it not be moved to the town of Florence until it meets all those requirements, and we would ask the applicant if they understand what we're asking them to do, and if they agree to that on the record.
Okay, so, the motion is to approve with the applicant providing documentation to our community development for, as the remodel was done per code, per permit in Scottsdale, and would pass the inspection, and however you would work that with our community development director, his requirements of who's inspecting and what that is, and that you, you understand that do this prior to moving it to the town, so there's not incurring any other fees or any, anything else for you.
Okay, I do have a question. So, when we first purchased the home, we did, we inquired about moving it into Florence Gardens, and we were then informed that we were not able to because of that rule. We did not know it was the rule for the entire town of Florence, we just thought it was the Florence Gardens, so that's why we continued our search and found a, a property, a private property that we thought we'd be able to move it to. We, I did, well, I thought I did my due diligence, I called the town, I asked questions, I even told them, you know, the situation with Florence Gardens, and I wasn't informed about this law, and so, I mean, we were already on our way in, I know you guys said an inspection, but I, thinking that I was, I got the permits to move, I got the movers to prep the house and actually cut it and prep it for the move, and we already received the permit, so as far as getting it inspected, it is already prepped to move, so that would be my only...
It probably would be easier to inspect now that it's prepped to move.
Okay.
I would tell you that, yeah, so now that it's opened up and they can inspect, yeah, and I think, and our community development director would work with you as far as that requirement.
Okay.
I think it's fairly simple, and it sounds like that it should be fine if, if the remodel was done. I will tell you also Florence Gardens, so that's an HOA, and so, because, so years ago, so we would be like our HOAs, that that's when we adopted that as well in the town. So, but the HOA obviously didn't give you that variance, so there's, there's this chance here. So, did you understand the qualifications to get this passed?
Yes, no, I understand.
Okay.
I was just a little confused, like, to get it, you know, inspected, and it's already kind of prepped for the move, I was like, how are they going to inspect?
I think, and then there's inspections once you get it here, and there's, and our community development will guide you through this.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
I would also, I would also ask that we get the stipulations in writing, signed by the applicant and the mayor, so there is no questions.
It'll be part, it'll be part of the minutes, absolutely. Thank you for that. All right, anybody else? All right, with that, then, I have a motion. Did I get a second?
I second.
Mayor, just so we're clear, I wanted to make sure on the record, did the applicant agree to the stipulations?
She agreed to them, yes, she agreed to them. Okay.
I second.
Say a motion and a second.
Motion was stipulations noted. Okay.
Any other discussion? Not hearing any. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, good luck to you, and welcome to Florence, ma'am. Okay, with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn from the Board of Adjustments.
Make a motion that we adjourn from the Board of Adjustments. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you very much. Item number nine is adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District One.
Make a motion that we adjourn to Merrill Ranch District One. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community District One. Any other discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. We are now in Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District One. Item 9A is discussion possible action on adopting the June 3rd and 11th, 2025 minutes to the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One. The minutes were part of the packet. Does any, does anybody have any questions for Ms. Garcia?
No.
Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve, adopt the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District One minutes from June 3rd and 11th, 2025. District One.
Have a motion and a couple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you. Item 9B, discussion possible action on entering into a cooperative use agreement with Coldbrook Asphalt Company utilizing the City of Mesa Contract 2022159 for crack sealing application, HI5 High Density Mineral Bond Sealant, and striping at various community facilities District Number One locations within the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Community in the amount not to exceed $175,000. Good evening, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. You said it beautifully. What would you like? What would you like?
I don't get paid, I don't get paid by the word either there, Mr. Andy. Alright, very good. Is there any questions? Uh, this is very straightforward. Any questions for Andy?
Pardon me, I will say that this is gonna be the same item in the other community facilities district as well.
Yes, okay. You'll expect to say the same thing?
I, I hope we can.
Very, very good. I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, item nine B.
I'll second.
Say a motion.
You need a motion?
Make a motion that we, that we approve the cooperative use contract with Holbrook Asphalt utilizing the City of Mesa contract number 2022159 for crack sealing application not to exceed the amount of $175,000.
Okay, we have a motion and at least one second. So, any other discussion for, or questions? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, thank you very much. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Make a motion we adjourn from Community Facilities Number One.
Second.
Give a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright. Item number 11, adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to CFD Two.
Make a motion that we adjourn to CFD Two.
Have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright. We are now in Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. Item 11A, discussion of possible action on adopting the June 3rd, 2025 minutes of Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two. Is there any questions for the minutes that were part of this packet? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion on adopting the June 3rd, 2025 minutes of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Item number 11B is discussion of possible action on entering into a cooperative use contract with Holbrook Asphalt Company utilizing City of Mesa contract number 2022159 for crack sealing application of, and of HA5 high-density minerals bond solvent, striping at various community facilities district number two locations within the Anthem at Merrill Ranch Community in the amount not to exceed $175,000. Okay, with that, and Andy said it, this is the exact same contract. Do we have any questions for Andy? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we enter into use contract with Holbrook Asphalt utilizing City of Mesa contract number 2022159 for crack sealing application in the amount not to exceed $175,000.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, Andy, great job, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, we make a great team.
Alright, at this time, item number 12, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn from the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
I make a motion we adjourn from CFD Two.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Alright. Item number 13 is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as far as the consent agenda, unless a council member objects at the time the agenda item is called. Ladies and gentlemen, we've got three tonight, items A through C. Does anyone on council have anything they would like to be pulled off to, to discuss? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a move that we approve consent agenda as listed?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, thank you. Moving right along. Item 14 is our new business. Discussion, item 14A is our discussion approval disapproval of purchase of a new UV system from Glasgow for the south wastewater treatment plant that will be a direct replacement of the existing system utilizing a sole-source vendor not to exceed $250,010. Good evening, Mr. Tui.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Tonight you have before you, as Mayor said, is approval for a direct purchase for a new UV system. Basically, what this is, is our current system was installed in 2006, and it has basically reached the end of its life. Our staff are diligently working to keep it running, cleaning it, monitoring it, everything like that. But this system that we're asking to purchase, um, the original company we bought the system for back in 2006 was bought out by Glasgow, which is the new vendor. So, it would be a, basically, a direct like-for-like system we would be putting in. So, it's gonna be requiring very minimal construction, um, and we have four banks that we could put this in. We have two that are in right now, so we were gonna be ordering four, and this will give us another lifespan of 20, 25 years to remain compliant, um, much more maintenance-friendly, operator-friendly, and significantly less than the proposed alternatives for a new chlorine content tank or anything like that. So, it's the first step in our process to upgrade our UV system. We'll be coming later back with a, a new building to keep everything contained and out of the weather, so.
Alright, Jonathan, thank you so much for that. Does any council have any questions? Councilmember Bencina?
Jonathan, I, I, I saw this, and you explained it to me, right? And it had that really high-quality cooling system on it, where you used a, you used an ice chest, put a little motor in it to pump water to it?
Yes, sir, we have some very well-crafted staff out there, but that would not meet ADQ approval right now. It is working, um, but this is the first step in order to make it, you know...
So, are you gonna replace that? You're gonna replace that cooling pump, too?
Correct, yeah. This is just for the actual UV units themselves. They take about six months, four to six months lead time. Um, I will be following in the next couple of council items for the new building, um, skater improvements, which will include the cooling system, electrical improvements and everything like that. This is just for the actual UV units themselves.
Yeah, and the bulbs, we're out of bulbs, you can't buy the bulbs anymore.
We bought, according to our vendor, we bought the last remaining bulbs in the United States right now. Um, that's how hard they are to get, for, for the old system that we currently have, so. Um, where we are taking care of them as best we can.
Okay, alright. Anyone else have any other questions? Alright, with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve the purchase of a new UV system from Glasgow for the south wastewater, WRF, that will be a direct replacement of the existing city, city system utilizing a sole-source vendor not to exceed $250,010 and 10...
Second.
Dollars, yeah. $250,010 and $10.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, thank you, Jonathan, for that. Item 14B, discussion approval disapproval of entering into a revocable license lease agreement between the town of Florence and the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to manage McFarland State Historic Park through December 31st, 2028. Ms. Garcia, do you have anything to add?
Mayor, members of the council, um, the town of Florence has a longstanding relationship with the Chamber of Commerce, who has run McFarland Park for us, which is our visitor center since the town took over McFarland Park. Um, we did receive information and a request from the Chamber to increase their, um, allocations to enter into this contract with us. We did go back and look. We used a 10% cost of living, and the way we got that was going back through using so both the social security cost of living with a Tucson cost of living, which is lower than a Phoenix cost of living, and doing a combined adjusted gross income. The other thing I will point out is that, um, each time that we enter into agreement with the Chamber, we do come back and we provide them throughout the year, um, several types of grants throughout the years. So, you enter into your agreement, and then you'll see them at least two to three times a year coming back and receiving community grants. So, this year, I had asked Carl to go ahead, and Carl's our finance director, to run the numbers for 2025. This year, we will pay the, the Chamber for the grants, as well as this contract, $75,320, all items that have been approved by council for this fiscal year. So, when we go back and look, the new amount that the Chamber will receive, which is included in the total amount that includes both the grants and the Chamber contract is $71,400 and, $71,744. This is a combination of both their agreement and future grants. So, you won't see them again throughout the year, asking for additional items, additional monies. This will be what they get to plan with and understand that they have it, so that they can move forward. A lot of times, we'll put out a special event grant, and they won't know that they have the item until we award that grant. This allows them to know throughout the year that they have it, to properly plan, and to be, have it be an annual thing that occurs, and it's an expectation per the contract that those types of events do occur, and that they're successful. Um, the members of the Chamber are in the audience tonight, and they're available, and they're online, and they're happy to discuss the contract with council if they so wish.
Okay, before we open up council, I know, Madam President, would you like to speak or anything, or any board members would like to say anything prior to? Or just answer questions?
Yes.
Okay, alright. I'll open it up to councils. Council have any questions for our board members or Ms. Garcia? Councilmember Bencina?
Well, yeah, I guess seeing these, uh, annual events, of course, I don't understand why we're giving money for a Florence market that makes money for them. Car show, I do have concerns, we give them money to support the event, but I also understand because of the requirements of 240 cars versus 330 last year, you're gonna lose about $4,000 in revenue, based on, uh, people signing up for their car to be part of this program. So, that's a big loss of money, uh, for a small chamber, but, um, yeah, I'm just, uh, I guess I knew we had some event money we were spending. I hope we can figure out the 330 car and allocate it again. I've asked questions about it already. Uh, yeah, that's all I really have, so.
Okay, any other council members have anything? Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, the only thing I see is that, in the future, I would hope that we could, there would be a way to kind of separate the, the Chamber from the actual, like, an actual Chamber visitor building, to an actual, you know, leaving the, the park as is. I'd, I'd really hope, even if not my tenure here, that the next council be something that can look at and try to budget for, and try to kind of separate them, because it makes it a heck of a lot easier, in my opinion.
Okay. Yeah, councilmember Bedford?
I really don't want the Chamber to fail or anything like that. Um, I know that, um, you all are trying to regroup and, and things like that. So, my thing with the contract, I was hoping that maybe we could do a six-month trial to see how they're gonna do at the Chamber.
Okay, can I, can I address that? So, that was the discussion. So, um, discussions that were, were had between myself, councilmember Maldonado, who is, is the Chamber liaison, um, and then three members of their board as we went through this and speaking about this. Um, I thought the same thing, uh, because, for me, it was kind of both, for both sides, because there's a regrouping going on. It's just a regrouping. Businesses go through regroupings, it is what it is. We go through that as well. Um, and I, and I think one thing that came to us from the board was that they felt that it would be more beneficial for them to go ahead and get their new director if they had a contract. So, what we ended up doing in this, and you've noticed in this, there is a 60-day, um, notification. So, if we, as a council, sees, or our staff sees, that they're not fulfilling their, we give a 60-day notice, and then we end our contract. Same thing with the, with the Chamber. If they see that they don't want to be into it, they don't want to reg, they don't want to do something, they can get out of it with 60 days as well. That's part of that contract. And so, I kind of agreed with that, my thought, too. We posed that, and then that's kind of where we came from in this. It doesn't mean that we can't do another stipulation here as we're discussing it. It just, I just wanted to tell you that that was the thought process going in, that not only did we not do a six-month, we actually done a two-month. So, did that, did that answer your question on that?
Mayor, may I correct one thing? It's a 90-day notice.
Oh, it's a 90-day?
It's a 90-day.
I thought it was a 60-day notice.
Contract states 90.
Okay, my bad. It's a 60-day notice, or 90-day notice, 90-day notice.
I do have one more question, when you get a chance.
Hold on. I've got Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I'd like to follow on councilmember Maldonado's comment, uh, only I'd like to make it this year. I really feel that the duties and responsibilities and payments should be separate. I am not in favor of commingling Chamber responsibilities with the McFarland State Park contract. One of the reasons for that is because we have to be very explicit on what we have promised the state we will accomplish. We already signed our end of the bargain with the state, and it's pretty specific what needs to be provided. And I am not clear on where this 10% COLA comes from. The Chamber pays no expenses for McFarland State Park.
True.
We pay everything, the town, it's a pass-through, right? So, you pay for your insurance, and you pay for your staff. To me, if it's required to have more money to McFarland, why wasn't that brought up when we negotiated the contract with the state? I do not see why our taxpayers are picking up a COLA increase, because we did not negotiate that with the state.
May I address that, please?
Please.
So, I want to back up a little bit. So, when you go through this contract, the town of Florence is entering into a professional service agreement with the Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce to run our visitor center. All payments go towards the running of the visitor center, which is the town of Florence's entity. So, um, we are not entering into a contract to provide the Chamber of Commerce with monies to pay for the Chamber of Commerce duties. The monies that we provide them is so the town of Florence doesn't go in and operate a, the, the visitor center. So, I also asked, um, I had, um, our finance director run me some numbers of what it would take the town if we took on the responsibility and we ran it ourselves, and we said we would get a rec coordinator, as well as two part-time people, and if the town was going to do it just for staffing, it would be $158,000 that we would pay on our scale to go ahead and operate that in the same way. That's one full-time staff member and two part-time staff members, based on the salary scale of the town of Florence. So, I don't want you to think that the town of Florence is entering into a contract for Chamber business. We are not. We've actually excluded that, and the town doesn't involve themselves in Chamber business. Everything is about whether or not they are operating the McFarland Park per our agreement as our subcontractee. Now, prior to us meeting with, um, the mayor, uh, Mr. Maldonado, our councilmember Maldonado, our liaison, and three members of the board, we did a walk, a joint walkthrough with the Chamber and the state, and they stated that they are very pleased with everything that we are doing. And we did that prior to entering into our agreement to make sure. In the last two weeks, we've had several communications with the state of Arizona, stating that they do support the continued operations that has been in place since the town of Florence took over operations of McFarland Park, to be the town of Florence's visitor center. So, I just want to clarify that, because it's not that we are providing a contract with the Chamber, nor that we're paying for Chamber services. So, we do not, we do not enter into a contract for those services, just for the visitor center.
Understood, but to me, is the visitor center not a normal function of any Chamber? So, I do not see that as a town responsibility.
True. Councilmember Bencina?
I've got another question. So, also, I, I, you sent me the, the state contract, and in, in the state contract, I could find nothing in there when it came to hours of operation mandates. So, with the struggle sometimes to get volunteers that, number one, meet the expertise that the state is looking for... So, with the struggle sometimes to get volunteers that number one, meet the expertise that the state is looking for in the contract, to be able to walk people through McFarland Park, is it possible we could cut the hours?
And we just, we just spoke to the state. I can speak to them again, but, um, we can speak to the state about that if the council would so choose.
I may have read it wrong, but I believe that, uh, there are hours that are in the contract.
I couldn't, you had to, send me, you can highlight the hours, but I went back looking for it.
There are, there are at least hours that's in our contract between the town and the chamber. I didn't.
Between the town and the chamber? Yes. I'm talking about the town, the town and the state.
Yeah, I did, yeah, and I, I don't recall, but Lisa says, so maybe she can provide those for us. So, is there any other questions?
So, my second question would be, um, is on training. So, I know that there's been turnover and as a former museologist up the street, uh, there's very specific training on how to handle archives and objects in a museum. So, I would like to know what your plan is to train the people who are going to be handling the McFarland objects.
Well, that's a good question, um, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. Um, we're actually currently, um, training four part-time people to work in McFarland and State Park. And, uh, to be honest with you, uh, the training of handling the artifacts has not been brought up. So, I will take that back to those being trained and devise a plan for that.
Thank you, because it has been in the contract since 2017. State Parks has requested that there is accredited training specific to museum objects. So apparently that's something that we're going to start doing. I think the good news is there is plenty of training out there, including online, so it doesn't require, uh, going away. I know that the curator from State Parks, uh, offers training. And I think now that you're hiring new people, it'd be the ideal time to bring them down and have them train them properly. I think the other thing is, uh, I know we work off scripts because we're the same way. You depend on volunteers. There's a lot of turnover. And the volunteers sometimes remember what you told them and, and maybe not. So, um, we had scripts written and I think that's also someplace where State Parks can help you so that you can develop a standard script. And should you have a superstar that goes deeper, wider, and can talk off the cuff, nothing wrong with it. But as you're going to experience more turnover, because you just do with volunteers, just to have a standard presentation that's been vetted, right? So we know that the facts are the way, especially State Parks wants it presented because part of their contract also says to be able to talk about why McFarland State Park is so important, not just to Florence, but to Arizona, right? So, thanks.
Councilmember Maldonado?
So, you just triggered something in, in my mind. So, one of the things I saw down, when I went down to Tombstone a couple of weeks ago, when I stayed at one of the hotels, was you had a QR code. I don't know if you guys have something like that. I don't remember seeing anything like that. You scan the QR code and it basically tells you what, about whatever you're looking at. So is that something that we have or maybe have the capabilities of doing something like that?
I'm sure we have the capabilities of doing that.
Councilmember Buchalata?
I'm very confident that the board can get this all figured out in, in the 90 days, um, you know, before we have to look at it again. And I know last time, um, we were talking about the items being categorized and inventoried and I don't know if that's something also to look into is, I believe that had fallen off at one point, um, that the artifacts are supposed to be inventoried and categorized. So that may be something else that you guys look into, but I'm sure that we all, the town staff and, and the board can sit down and, and get this all figured out within the timeframe, so I'm very confident in you guys.
So, Councilmember Buchalata, that, that has been raised before and when, before this round of contract talks, um, that came up. And it is an exposure to the town. Shipbo understands that. So State Parks is responsible to do that inventory. And I think we need to stay on them to make sure that happens. Because until that happens, it's a he-said, she-said, if something disappears off the floor.
And I believe they were just there in the archive room, so, yeah.
Any other comments, any questions? All right, before we ask for a motion.
Mayor, I do need to correct. You were right. It is a 60-day notice. It's a 90-day extension with a 60-day notice, but we were looking at the term section. That's right, sir. Wear that black.
Thank you very much. Wow, I hope my wife's watching so she heard that I am right. So, anyway, so thank you for that. So, anyway, uh, I just want, uh, make a couple of statements. Uh, so, it's no secret that, uh, all council, uh, all staff has heard from a number of former employees, other residents, uh, through this. And, and we've listened and, and we've heard them. And they're coming from people that we have relationships with and we, we understand and we trust that as well. We also understand, I understand, I'm a partnership and a relationship guy. And it pays dividends every day, every day. And I don't waive from that. And so, the, the partnership, basically paraphrasing a definition, is, is two or more people working together to get to the same end of something and partnering. Um, I believe that the chamber and the town must work together, must work close together for economic development, for, uh, a lot of how things run in this town. And I was very happy to see that we had a relationship with our chamber the way we do. Uh, it's, it is, uh, first-name basis. It's, we know, we work with every board member, we work with everybody. Um, and while we don't interfere in your day-to-day business, we're two businesses. It's your business. You don't interfere in our businesses, your board. We don't interfere in your board business and it's up to you to make sure that you're fulfilling the contract between the two of us. And I have a great deal of confidence that you will find your new center and you will figure it out and get through there. I also, we also have to represent our citizens and our taxpayers. And that's where I feel better for the 60-day and I feel better for, for you guys as well. If you guys get to a point where you're just like, I'm, we're done, then it actually is equally beneficial for you as well. And so, uh, I feel very confident, uh, in what you can do and, and what you will do, uh, and continue our relationship. So with that, I would entertain a motion for item 14C, or 14B, rather.
I make a, I make a motion that we enter into a revocable license and lease agreement between the town of Florence and Greater Florence Chamber of Commerce, commerce to manage McFarland Historic State Park through December 31st, 2028.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Are there any other discussion from councilmembers? All right, with that, Lisa, can, can I get a reverse roll call vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Buchalata?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, reversed roll call. Mary?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams. Councilmember Buchalata?
Aye.
Councilmember Bencina?
Yes.
Councilmember Maldonado?
Yes.
Councilmember Neal? Councilmember Bedford? It's unanimous.
All right, very good. Thank you, folks, for coming. Thank you, folks, online, the board. I think the board, whole board is here one way or another tonight. So thank you, guys, very much. We look forward to working with you. Item 14C is our discussion approval disapproval of entering into a cooperative use contract utilizing one GPA agreement number 25-05P-02 with Dunkor LLC doing business as Summit West signs for the purchase and installation of one double-sided electronic message sign, uh, EMC sign in an amount not to exceed $149,045.95 to be installed at the fire station number two.
Mayor, members of council, I regret to inform you that, um, Jared did have a death in his family and he is not here today. He'll be out all this week on bereavement, so we're praying for him and, um, and his travels. Um, do you want to say that Jared did go forward with the council's direction? And we do have one sign that is under contract and ready to move forward. It is the sign at the fire station. The total requested amount is a thousand, a hundred and forty-nine thousand, forty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. If you would like to proceed with this item and moving forward, we would need you to approve the item so we could proceed.
Okay, with that, I'm going to open up council for, um, any discussion. Councilmember Bencina?
So, I went back and listened to our work session, our council meeting on this topic. And I watched it. I've printed the minutes and it is all over the board. And Fire Station Two was one of those that really wasn't agreed upon, even though it ended up being agreed upon. Seventy-nine in Maine was highly recommended and it also has a higher cost of about $180,000 plus contingencies. There's only $250,000 in the CIP budget for this project. If you do this project, you can't do seventy-nine in Maine until the council gives you another $80,000 to $100,000 for the sign. Um, I also have been looking at the price tag for this. And with everything else we're going through, trying to look at money spent, I can't see spending $150,000 or $200,000 for a sign. I think it's been overdesigned. We only saw one design and we didn't think it was going to cost this amount of money. So, I would love to personally see another design because nobody can tell me how much is the LED sign versus the rest of the base. I'm, I'm thinking that the bottom is very expensive. And can we get a new design that doesn't cost this amount of money? And if we're going to do anything, it needs to be at seventy-nine in Maine first where it shows has higher viewership. But I really don't want to get in, we're going to spend $400,000 possibly putting some signs up of our tax dollars where we need to keep money in this town. We need to look at an additional redesign project. Now, this contractor assumed the drawing from the previous contractor, if I remember, if I understand, right? Because the other one went out of business or, and this is a new contractor and we gave them a design. I would love to see them come back with something a little less expensive that gets us to do the same thing.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I agree with everything that was said. So if you review that meeting and you talk, uh, if you look at all the councilmembers, no one was loving this solution. We felt backed into a corner because we've been working on this for apparently eight years or more. And, okay, that's an issue. And I understand, the mayor and the council, we wanted to push this forward. That is not an excuse to spend a considerable amount of money that no one loves. So, I, I also agree that since we were not the council that originated this, then, so we, we, as I said at that meeting, I do not feel gave explicit enough directions so that staff could go out and do the right job. It was too broad. We didn't know what we wanted. We didn't give a budget. We didn't have any idea what the messaging would be so you could direct which, where the sign would be. Every single councilmember agreed, we're trying to attract business coming into town. Both locations of the signs we picked are people going out of town. So, to see what's going on in town, you're going to have to be reading from across Hunt Highway. So, it, it, it just was a not-as-well-thought-out plan as I think we, we owe the citizens for this amount of money. And I agree, let's try and bring down the cost. I know that was a beautiful sign, but at the end of the day, that's, that's a lot of money.
Councilmember Buchalata?
I can't say that I don't agree, um, especially with losing the amount that we've lost with, you know, the incorporation and everything. It's just really hard to put a stamp on something up to $400,000 and that's if we can put it at seventy-nine in Maine. If, it's, there's still that possibility that we may not be able to utilize that property. So I, I just agree. I want to just take a step back for a minute. I know a lot of work has been put into this and I appreciate everybody for doing that. I just feel like almost half a million dollars is just a real, a really big chunk of change right now to put into something that we're not 100% sold on. And you can tell when we're 100% sold on things because we all get really, really excited. And I think this was a really long night and we wanted to get these two things done. And I, I agree, I think after coming back and thinking about it, um, I, I'm, I'm in agreeance. I think we just need to take a step back and like really think about it. And if we do, let's do one. Let's see how it goes over. Let's see what's put on it and how, how good it performs and at a much cheaper rate. Let's just try that. That's, I agree.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I look at this sign and I agree with the rest of my councilmembers are saying. I look at this sign like real estate, right? What's the first rule of real estate? Location, location, location. So, and I don't mind, like, voting a certain way. And if it's, comes with a price tag, but if we, if the return on investment is going to be there, then I'm, I'm, I'm on board. But I can't, in good faith, vote yes for this return on investment at this location.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Neal?
Ditto.
Anyone else? All right. Not, not seeing, and, and I, and I would agree, uh, with my councilmembers as, as far as that night. We were all over the place trying to figure out. We, we did talk about it. We did. I, I was alerted back with about the minutes and what was said. And what we had talked about too was the possibility of putting one with our widening up toward the railroad tracks to our, the edge and also as we were talking through that. Um, I, I thought at the time and, and the discussion was, we still get 14,000 cars a day go by there, uh, at that area. Is it the optimal place? No, it's not the optimal place because we know that a lot of folks that turn out of the Anthem area to, do turn right and go north, we obviously want them to come turn left, uh, as much as we can. And I think that's going to start happening once we get some services out there. Um, but at, at this time, uh, I agree with my councilmembers. And maybe we can, we can step back, regroup. So with that, I will entertain a motion from a councilmember.
I'll make a, a new motion. Uh, do I have to make a motion to not approve this first?
So, I would say that if you would like to, um, make a motion to a future work session so that you may talk about this, um, the other thing I would like to say too is that Jared did be, go out and he did get all of the costs associated with the different locations and the utilities. So it'll be a good work session to where you can actually look at fiscal costs before you get the sign. I'm just bringing in the electricity, which will help council.
I, I'd like to, while we're on this subject, I absolutely do not want the sign at the park. We have come up with other alternatives that are much more powerful.
Well, I think, I, so, I think we've got, we've got the item and I think that's the work session. I think that's going back to whether that's a work session or right now, but now we've got to clear this item. So we either let this go without a motion or we have a motion to disapprove if that is so what people want. So just a motion. So we get off of this and then we can get back on to.
Sure, 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 sure. So, um, where, where am I?
C.
Item 14C.
14C. So, I'll make a motion that we disapprove item 14C Cooperative Use Contract Using One GPA Agreement Number 25-05P-02.
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a whole bunch of seconds. Any other discussion? All right, not seeing any. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, thank you so much for that and, and we will keep Jared and his family in our prayers.
Yes.
Item 14D is discussion approval disapproval to reapprove the purchase of a bucket truck through the Sourcewell Cooperative Contract Number 110421-TIM with Versaleft, a time manufacturing company, an amount not to exceed $219,045.75. Good evening, Mr. King.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Uh, tonight, uh, we're bringing back an item that we brought to you and you approved on 7th. The only difference tonight is the amount not to exceed is increased due to, uh, having use tax and the, um, the registration fees, uh, from ADOT included in that for amount not to include, not to exceed, uh, $219,045.75.
Okay, is there any questions right now?
I just want to make a comment. I just want to make a comment that for everybody that wants to know, this is still below the $250,000 that was budgeted in the CIP.
That is correct, sir.
Okay, any other questions? Vice Mayor?
So, I saw your team out there putting our Christmas decorations. So, I saw your team out there putting our Christmas decorations up today, that's wonderful. So, is this instead of using a lift, is that...
Yes, absolutely would be, what you saw is two to three people even in some cases working that piece of equipment. In this case, with this equipment, we would only need one to safely hang those decorations.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, Councilmember Maldonado.
So, Paul, so this, for example, like, let's say the, at the cemetery, the rope broke on the flag, this would be able to restring the rope, if that were to happen with this?
On the flagpole?
On the flagpole, yes, sir.
Yes.
Sounds like you got a couple of jobs for this truck. Is there any other, Councilmember Ben Sina?
Just one more comment, this is going to be a shared truck with Public Works, for trees and other things.
Yes, it'll be available for all city employees to have use of.
Okay, very good. All right, I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to reapprove the purchase of bucket truck Cooperative Contract Number One-One-Zero-Four-Two-One-Dash-T-I-M with Versa Lift, and an amount not to exceed two-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand, forty-five dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Not seeing any, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, Paul. Item fourteen D, a resolution number nineteen-seventy-two dash twenty-five, discussion approval disapproval, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, adopting the recommended revisions to Article Five, Performance Evaluations, and Article Six, Classification, Compensation, and Benefits of the Town of Florence Personnel Policy, effective January third, twenty-twenty-six.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We're coming before you this evening after our work session last night to bring the language that you asked us to coordinate. These changes to Article Five and Six would talk about replacing merit with performance pay or a flat fee approved by the council to give increases to the employees. It also addresses several areas in Policy Six that need to be changed for purposes of clarifying payroll processes with the town's overtime, standby pay, and several other issues that have come up. About the language that we discussed last night at the work session for going to four-tenes is Option Two of the Section Sixteen, Six-fourteen, for work period for the administrative offices. Have you all had a chance to review the handout?
I read it. All right, thank you, is there any questions by council?
No.
All right, let me just make one more thing, look, and I apologize, I did not, I was bombarded, and I just want to make sure...
It was a long night last night, yes.
It was a long night, and it's been a long day. So, my question is, you can probably answer it off the top of my head, off the top of your head, we talked about the work hours. Okay, it is, it's changed.
Yes, it's changed.
All right, there we go. All right, I just wanted to make sure of that, that was the only other thing that I had on that, so, all right, if, I would entertain a motion if we have no other questions.
I make a motion, we approve Resolution Number nineteen-seventy-two dash two-five.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Not seeing, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, thank you, Ms. Wilson. All right, this brings us to item number fifteen, our second call to the public as promised. I have one person signed up, if you are online, and then you would like to speak, then you just raise your hand, and we'll call on you. Right now, Ms. Bonnie Bariola.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members, I'm Bonnie Bariola. If Florence wants to encourage tourism, it has a jewel that not many people know about that would bring lots of visitors to the town. It's the slaughterhouse that was used to provide meat for the people in the POW camp during World War Two, located near the North wastewater treatment plant. Florence still owns the land surrounding it. Lisa Garcia and I have discussed this several times, and I believe she still thinks it would be an excellent idea. We, with the Arizona Heritage Alliance, were able to get the legislature and governor to make one million dollars available in the Heritage Fund for two thousand twenty-five and twenty-six fiscal year. Thirty percent are three-hundred thousand dollars of those funds for historic preservation. I believe the maximum limit for one grant will be thirty thousand dollars because of the small amount of funding. If the town submitted a grant for thirty thousand dollars, this could provide funds to hire someone to add the building to the National Register, prepare a building condition assessment board, and perhaps even architectural drawings for the rehabilitation of the building. We, with the Arizona Heritage Alliance, yes, I'm Secretary of the Heritage Alliance, continue lobbying our legislators to fully fund the Heritage Fund for ten million dollars from the lottery, like it was voted on by the people of Arizona back in nineteen ninety. If so, three million dollars would be available for historic preservation, for the history of the heritage, oh, and for the history of the Heritage Fund, Google it online or talk to me. By the way, when it was fully funded, this is where we, with the Florence Preservation Foundation, got funds for the rehabilitation of the many buildings in Florence. Florence was third in the state behind Phoenix and Tucson for funding amount for grants, and I personally prepared most of those grants, and I would like to say that your attorney, Steve Cooper, was on our, is on our Board of Directors, and I met him over at the courthouse many mornings, having him sign the grants for form before they were submitted. So, this is simply a suggestion to council. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak in-house tonight or online? Not seeing any, I am now going to close the second call to the public. Whoop, hold on, Ms. Garcia.
My name is Lisa Garcia, I am a resident of Florence, Arizona, and I would just like to thank Mr. Cooper, who we will not see, and tell him what a great pleasure it has been to work with him and to learn from him. So, I just want to say how lovely it's been to have him as our city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you, the last time I got complimented, the vote was four to three.
It's unanimous tonight. Thank you very much. All right, with that, I'm going to go to our call to council. Councilmember Bedford.
I don't have a lot to say, I just wanted to say, staff, keep up the good work, and that's, I'll say that's it, but, Mr. Cooper, thank you so very much for what you did for us in Florence, and I look forward to hopefully working with you again.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Ben Sina.
This week, along with Vice Mayor Adams and Councilman Bedford, we attended our first in-person craft civic meeting in Tucson, where we got together with fifty other elected officials for about four hours, had some interesting topics, and we learned what's going on in a lot of other towns, it's kind of interesting. One thing I learned was, is in some towns, councils don't get along. But anyway, the other thing I had the pleasure of doing on Friday with Chief Snyder was visiting our three new firefighters at the academy, and it was a pleasure going there and seeing them plus all of the other candidates there doing some exercises, and seeing our, we had to provide a truck that day with five firefighters to assist, and we also have a captain down there that's been doing the training with our firefighters, thoroughly enjoying it, so it was a great treat to go down there. I will tell you, Chief Thomas, he has recruited a basketball team, because the two of the three are like six-six, and his new battalion chief, I think, is six-six, so he's putting together a basketball team to take you on, so, anyway. So, again, I appreciate what the town has done for us, look forward to our Christmas parade coming up, and soon, and that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Maldonado.
Thank you, Mayor. Just the first thing is, I just want to let folks know about, there was an Army National Guard member that passed away this Sunday, he was firefighter Quentin Hernandez, and just please keep his pregnant wife in your prayers and his family, they did set up a GoFundMe page, so I'm just putting it out there, I put it on my Facebook page as well, any help would be appreciated, and/or prayers. Second thing was, I was fortunate enough to go out and see the motors this weekend, the rolling on the river over at Wildhorse, and Cali Nino did an awesome job for being his first time, doing that in ten months of prepping for it, and seeing all the different motors from San Diego, Glendale, PCSO, which basically took the majority of the awards. It was awesome to see all these cops coming together, and just the camaraderie, and just the training that they go through to ride these motors, I couldn't do it on my bike, what they did out there, so, and I look forward to hopefully going out there next year, and hopefully having our own motor out there. Right, Chief? And I also got to go to the Pinellas County Stand Down in Coolidge, and visit with veterans, got to see and talk with Representative Martinez and Representative Lopez, and we talked at length about veterans' issues out there, and got to meet with a lot of the veterans, and got to see what some of their needs were here in Pinellas County. So, more to come on that. And lastly, I got to go down to the Veterans Day Parade down in Tucson, got to meet the mayor of Tucson, she's really nice, I got to meet the chief of police, and Sheriff Nanos, and then one of the representatives too, but I forgot his name. So, that was, I had a lot of stuff going on this past week, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Buchalata.
Well, I can mark off number one, thank Mr. Cooper, off my list, because we all just did that. I just wanted to remind everybody that Junior Parada is coming, so support the kids, and meet us at the parade if you want to come along. I just wanted to also remind everybody that we have a ton of board and commission seats open, up to four seats on some commissions are now open. So, in talking with some people, in watching some people do their final goodbye last week, or, yeah, last Thursday on the Community Services Board, I just wanted to encourage people to come in and ask questions, and kind of watch some of these commissions in action. A lot of them are televised, YouTube, on our town page, you could find the links, you can go in person, and I just wanted to encourage people to get involved in some sort of capacity. I also wanted to give some big kudos to Florence PD and Florence Fire for that structure fire that you guys have handled over the past couple of weeks, that was massive, and I have never been more proud that it did not spread to those houses right next door, you guys were on it, middle of the night, early morning, and you guys were there, and you kept our residents safe, nobody was hurt, and I'm just very, very proud of the work that Florence Fire and Florence PD do. So, I just wanted to give you guys some kudos for that, and I'm glad you guys made it safely, and that, you know, all the residents nearby were safe too, because that was pretty close to some structures. I also wanted to say that I remember when I was younger, we used to have this thing called a fire muster, and everybody from the state would come down and compete over here at Heritage Park, and it would be a whole day of firefighters from all over the state competing for that trophy, and I would say that it would be nice to see our PD and our fire kind of going at it and doing their own little muster, just like a little friendly fire over here to try to compete in some things. Yeah, no fighting, no jujitsu, no? But I think it would be, I think it would be great to kind of think of something like police games and the fire muster, and that would bring a lot of people to town, and honestly, it brought a lot of firefighters back in the day, it's when the fire department was still at Public Works, but it brought a lot of people here to see what our town was about, and it actually recruited a lot of people and got a lot of people on board, so just something to think about maybe in the future. And after that, I just wanted to tell everybody, I hope that everybody has a wonderful and a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Neal.
I'll start out with, the Gophers went down to Tucson Friday for the second round of the playoffs, due to a real late start, they had a really good shot at beating that squad, they played them before and lost on a fumble in the last seconds, and they just got a horribly late start and could not gain ground, so Florence is out of the playoffs, but they had one heck of a season, a real good season, did a lot better than I thought that we're going to do, and a lot of other people did. So, go Gophers next year.
All right, Vice Mayor.
A couple of things, so, several of us were at the Pony Express here at Town Hall, and I'm very proud of our Florence royalty rode along with the Gilbert royalty, it was a wonderful event, and the little ones, I think, are eight years old, and they're called the Sweethearts, and they are truly sweethearts, it was really, really special. I do want to say thank you, there are several citizens that came and spoke tonight, and we hear you. I know a lot of people don't like to come in and speak publicly, but there is nothing more important than us hearing your opinions, whether we agree with you or not, we do listen, and should it come up in another context, we remember these things, and I think every single council member takes this really seriously, so I just want to say, and out to the public, if you have something on your mind, and if you're not comfortable public speaking, talk to any one of us privately, but please do come in so everybody hears the benefit of what you're recommending, and I think we will have taken action on one resident's request and probably take action on several others, so I want to thank you. I do want to also speak to all the people out there thinking about running for council. I was a no, 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 not ever person, I'm still not convinced I'm in the right place, but please, please do consider it, there is nothing better than a wide variety of our citizens from every area, every age, joining in, and if you're not sure, as Nicole said, get on a commission, it's the best place for you to start learning and interacting with the government, and I think you'll find, you may not make the difference you came in to make, but you make a difference in so many other ways, because there's so much going on, and it's all good, and I have to end with giving kudos to this council. We do not agree on many things, but we work dang hard to make sure, before we come to you, we have feted every issue, that we have researched it, and we've discussed it with the appropriate parties, and I really appreciate, in a way that I couldn't have appreciated when I sat out there in those horrible uncomfortable chairs, before I leave this council, I am going to get the residents some chairs, but you just can't imagine the work and the discussion that goes in behind the scenes, and the last note, thank you to Mr. Cooper, because you don't see the things that hit his desk, I thought, you know, he signed up for a temporary, how bad could it be? Well, he has been run through the mill, and we thank him, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor, for that, so, I'll just go down my list, because some of them have been talked about, of course, the Junior Parada and the parade, so, I will say, last Monday, so, we started celebrating our Veterans Day, we went, so, actually, the Vice Mayor and myself were at the county complex for the veteran, and the town manager, we didn't see him, he kind of sneaks in and then tells us he was there, so, anyway, and the town manager was there as well, a very, very good turnout of their employees and some other folks there too. Then, on Tuesday, the eleventh, I was joined by the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Ben Sina at the Sun City Anthem Area Veterans Day, which was a very well-attended, probably two-hundred... probably, probably 200 people, uh, were out there and, and very emotional, uh, and it was just a great event and, uh, so thanks to everyone that went out there too. Uh, so then we, uh, actually, uh, as the Vice Mayor alluded, that she and Councilmember Bedford joined me on Saturday for the Gilbert Pony Express, the Gilbert days come through, it's a long, uh, tradition for them to come through and do a proclamation, so we met out there. Um, Monday I met, so, we talk about our legislators and, uh, legislators Martinez and Lopez who have given us so much money for one thing and then it just gives us, um, a lot of their time. Uh, so they actually started a mayor's roundtable, so I met, uh, with mayors from Coolidge, uh, Casa Grande, Maricopa, uh, and met them, so we had a discussion just about, uh, the priorities of coming up and I, I did report some of that to, uh, some of the priorities to the council and I will continue that report. Uh, just a good sit-down lunch meeting, just have a regular talk about priorities. Um, I would also like to thank this council for the work session last night, uh, it made tonight's easy, much easier, the work much easier tonight, uh, and it is, it is always good to have that. Um, then Thursday night, if you would join us for a proclamation at the rodeo grounds, weather permitting, it's supposed to rain, so it is the Junior Parada, as you know, we take our proclamations on the road to the people, uh, and it'll be out at the rodeo grounds at six o'clock, if it's raining, it will be here at six o'clock and council will make sure and let you know where that's at to read the proclamation and get pictures with our, uh, Junior Parada royalty, which is, which is always awesome. Uh, third Fridays is this Friday, um, and unfortunately it just breaks my heart that I'm not going to be here for the parada this year, my dad's having a, uh, shoulder replacement, so I'm going to go back and hang out with him for a week and, uh, and irritate him, so help him out in Illinois, so I'll be out for a week. Um, I will tell you also, Country Thunder released their artist lineups, uh, it's going to be a good lineup this year, it's going to make up for last year, uh, so we're very excited about that and, and start thinking already about Country Thunder and Road to Country Thunder and it just start all over again, so we appreciate that. Um, and with that, we already, we have thanked Mr. Cooper and, and I, I, and I don't think that we can thank you enough, uh, sometimes there's a little bit as bringing a third party in or someone that's not, that doesn't know your day-to-day, uh, there's possibly some apprehension. I didn't have that because I had heard that you were doing really good, but you proved yourself, uh, very much to us and, and I know that people that work with you every hour of every day, uh, the town manager and the clerk possibly, uh, were complimentary and, and we appreciate that very much for that, so, other than that, that's all I have, I want to also wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving as I won't be here. So with that, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Okay, we've got two motions, uh, we have a motion and a second, you want to count them? We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right.